Good evening and welcome to the Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, September 16th, 2014. Our agenda tonight is the call to order, questions from the public regarding items not on the agenda, public hearing on the request of the Hingham Yacht Club for a change of manager, public hearing on the request of National Grid to install and maintain a gas main on Brimmer Circle Road, public hearing at the request of Paragon Funding Group for a change of managers, Union Fish Seafood and Raw Bar Entertainment License. We'll begin what I believe will be a two-part discussion on Selectmen goals and objectives. We'll do some appointments and then we'll have Selectmen and Town Administrator reports. And we're foregoing the approval of the minutes because, to be very honest, I have not read them. So we'll save the minutes from August 19th for next time. So with that, do we have anybody here for questions from the public regarding items that are not currently on our agenda? Okay. How about the Hingham Yacht Club? Come on up.
Good evening, Chairwoman Lottner and members of the board. My name is Tom Van Gell and I represent the Hingham Yacht Club in this matter. And before you tonight is the application for a change of manager for Mary Ann Shea to James Randall, who's to my left. Ms. Shea is no longer affiliated with the club and Mr. Randall currently serves as an officer of the club. Mr. Randall is also the longtime treasurer of the club. He is a CPA and he's qualified to serve as manager of record for the club's wine and malt license for on-premises consumption at 211 Downer Avenue. The Hingham Yacht Club respectfully requests that the board approve the applicant's petition for change of manager from Mary Ann Shea to James Randall.
Thank you. Gentlemen?
Hi, Jim.
Hi, Paul.
I have no questions.
Other Paul?
Jim, could you just tell me a little more about yourself because I know we don't know each other really well in terms of...
Okay. My name is Jim Randall. I live at One Foley Court in Hingham. I grew up in Hingham. I'm a partner in a CPA firm downtown Boston and I'm currently the rear commodore of the Hingham Yacht Club.
Okay.
I have two daughters. They're beautiful.
They are.
As do I and they're beautiful. They're all blessed.
And Selectmen Gannon, just for the board's information, I know Irma knows this, but because Jim is the rear commodore, that means he'll be vice commodore and then commodore so there'll be continuity in his position at the club. He'll be there for several years and that's the reason for having Mr. Randall assume that position.
Sure. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And it's been a great transition with Mary Ann moving on and the new group taking over in the galleys. So I think that's great. And I don't have any questions, so...
I'll make a motion that we approve the request of the Hingham Yacht Club for the change of manager to James P. Randall.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
National Grid. Where's Harry? Roger? I can't deal with this. This isn't normal.
I'll go this way. You go this way.
Welcome. Now, when you get seated, why don't you introduce yourself?
I'm Vrata Phoenix with National Grid out of the Waldham office.
Thank you. And why don't you tell us a little bit about what you're asking for?
Okay. I'm standing in for Dennis Regan, who can't be here. And National Grid hereby respectfully request your consent to install and maintain approximately 60 feet, more or less, of two-inch gas main in Brimmer Circle Road in Hingham from the existing two-inch gas main at house number 14 Easterly to house number 18 for a new gas service.
Anything unusual with this one?
There's nothing that we know of. It's a 60-foot piece in the service.
Just a quick question and enthusiasm. How long do you think it's going to take?
For this, 60 feet and the service, I don't know the operational end of it, but I can't see barring weather problems or I can't see it more than two days.
When would you foresee starting?
I have no idea.
Roger?
They haven't indicated as to when they wanted to start, just as of yet, but I know that they're approaching the, quickly approaching the November 15th deadline and anything after that will require approval from our office. But, so I anticipate that it'll be sometime between now and November 15th.
I have no questions.
No, this was an easy one. Really? Okay, with that, Ted, any questions?
Just, Rog, do you want to confirm the road on the mortuary room side?
So Brimmer Circle is actually scheduled for reconstruction in 2017, so we're happy to see that they're extending the gas main prior to the reconstruction of the road. The, actually, the existing gas main that's there now was actually installed just last year, so evidently they received an additional request for a service and thereby necessitating the 60-foot extension. But again, we're happy to see that it's taking place before we come in and redo our roads.
And lastly, has the gas company made contact with the other properties on the street? Because I'd hate the board to see number 22 request this in 2018.
Exactly. All the butters have been notified.
Fair enough. Thank you.
If any of the butters between now and the time you put it in want gas, is that going to change this at all?
I am not sure if it'll change as far as the length that they're putting in. It may, whereas 22 is so much further back in the road.
But you could accommodate it.
Oh, I'm sure.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Paul G.
Sure. I will make a motion to approve the request of National Grid to install and maintain approximately 60 feet of two-inch gas main in Brimmer Circle Road. This gas main will originate from house number 14 and continue under the paved surface of Brimmer Circle Road the entire length to completion at house number 18. This gas main extension is needed to supply a new gas service for house number 18. This approval is subject to the stipulation of Department of Public Works, including letter dated August 18, 2014.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
The Paragon Funding Group and the change of managers. And if you all would introduce yourselves.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I'm Ms. Paula Wallburg. Familiar to the board, I know. And I just submitted the affidavit of notice to the butters for the record.
Want to talk us through this? After you both introduced yourself, I know you did and doesn't really need any of your introduction.
I'm Paul Wallburg.
Madam Chair, the transaction before you, I know it's a cumbersome package, but first I'd like to say there are no changes to the day-to-day operation. Mr. Wallburg continues to steer this ship and there are no changes at all in the day-to-day operation.
I think you can probably hear a giant sigh of relief in Hingham.
Yes. The process, as the board knows, under MGL Chapter 138, is that any time that there is any change at all in the corporate structure, it does need to be disclosed and needs to be approved by both the local board and the ABCC. And so not only are there no day-to-day changes, but the ownership that existed as the board previously approved continues to maintain itself here. What we're doing is adding some additional people. And the root of that comes from these folks originally being investors or folks that had loaned some funds to start up the business and naturally, rather than get their money back, they would prefer to be a permanent part of the organization. And so the lawyers behind the scenes said, sure, we can make that arrangement. And basically, in lieu of paying back the debt, it gives these folks some small percentage interest in the business. And so I know that all the individuals are disclosed in the packet, as are the query forms and personal information forms for all of them. But that's really, again, the majority interest here continues to be held by Mr. Wallburg and his family, and these are additional investors. And we're sort of backing into giving them this interest as a result, again, of those loans and/or temporary investments in the business.
Thank you. Gentlemen? Paul? And since we have you here, Mr. Wallburg, Paul, I want to thank you very much for everything that you are doing for the community. I don't think most people understand how generous you've been to the many efforts, and the Murph comes to mind immediately. All three of us are doing that next year, by the way. Right?
I'm not convinced.
We're working on it.
Given that Paul Gannon, I think, was the only one who did it.
He was. I was out of town. I have a legitimate excuse.
I was in town and didn't do it.
We're going to have a new... You were in town with a legitimate excuse.
There you go.
We'll have a new category next year, Paul.
But I do want to thank you because that's the one that comes to mind because of helping the veterans groups.
Absolutely.
But you've done wonderful things for many, many other, and you've been very generous with silent auctions, because I haven't won one yet, but I'm trying. So thank you very much.
We'll have to get some people together.
I'm Morgan on it. So if there's, and I have no questions on this, this is pretty straightforward.
I'll make a motion to approve the request of Paragon Funding Group III LLC DBA Walburgers for a change of managers and members and transfer of LLC membership interest.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Union Seafood and Raw Bar Entertainment License?
Hello.
Hi there. Would you introduce yourself and then tell us what this is all about?
Absolutely. My name's Gary Alex and I am the general manager at the Union Fish Seafood and Raw Bar in the Hingham Shipyard, right next door to Paul's restaurants, kind of sandwiched in the middle. And the reason I'm here is because we are coming into our second winter season and based on the lack of business from last year, we're trying to find new ways to try to reach out and be a little different and try to plateau our business a little bit more so this year than we did last year. And one of the ideas that we came up with was having some live acoustic entertainment on Thursday evenings, you know, during our dinner service to try to have a competitive edge in the shipyard. I believe we would be the only people in the shipyard that would have live entertainment and acoustic entertainment, and we thought that that would be a good way to compete with Paul's reality show.
Just so that I'm clear, sir, you're not, you're going to remove a table to accommodate the quartet or whatever it is that you bring in there?
Yeah, it's going to be just solo acoustic artists. And yeah, we have a table that we would move into the office and have the entertainer perform in that area.
I just have a question. In terms of what you're seeking, I mean, is there a limit as to the amount of entertainers that you can have?
We would have just one on Thursday night, performed from 7:00 till approximately 10:00 PM.
Have you spoken to any of the neighbors at all? This is, you know, any feedback?
Did talk to the launch office, the people that manage the properties, and they don't have a problem with it. We actually would start off, our first series would just be unamplified to see if that would work. If we did actually have to amplify the music for the second performer the following week, then we would probably start with just a small amplifier. I actually do have an engineering degree in sound recording, and so I would definitely be able to gauge volume and, you know, appropriate decibel levels compared to our normal music that's played through the system in the dining room. It would be equivalent.
I have one more question. The vote is also including allowing you to use two small flat-screen televisions seven days a week? Is there a reason why that needs an affirmative vote from the Selectmen or...
I just think that it wasn't disclosed when we initially opened the restaurant that we do have two TVs in our bar.
Under the general laws, televisions are considered entertainment.
Okay. Are you familiar with our noise bylaw?
I'm not familiar with that, no.
Has Mike Perino and the police looked at this for any issues?
Both the chief and the building commissioner have been made aware of these plans and neither one had any objection.
Okay. And the building commissioner would certainly be aware of the noise bylaw.
Mm-hmm.
Motion?
Yeah. Any further questions?
Nope.
Okay.
I'll move that we approve the request of Gamma III Group LLC DBA Union Fish Seafood and Raw Bar for an entertainment license consisting of a solo acoustic artist on Thursdays from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM, and for two small flat-screen televisions seven days a week from 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Good luck.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Should we do the next vote? And before we do that, on the list, I think on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, and I'll speak for Ted here and our town administrator and the staff, we want to extend our deepest sympathies to Deputy Chief Glenn Olson and Deputy Chief Bob Olson on the loss of their father. And he was a dear, sweet man. He was on the CERT team with Tally and I, so we did get to enjoy many, many hours with him. Great sense of humor. So it was a very great loss. I know, Ted, do you want to chime in here or any?
I think you said it very well, appropriately.
Gentlemen?
I concur.
Very good. So shall we do the next vote?
I'll move to sign an employment agreement with Deputy Fire Chief Robert J. Olson, period of September 6, 2014 through September 6, 2017.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ted, do you need to add anything here?
I do not.
Okay.
Just for the board and for the record, the agreement is consistent with the last agreement.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ted, do you want to take us through the next vote and perhaps add a little information to it?
So this vote is to extend the existing agreement with respect to the inter-agency operations between the Sewer Department, the Highway Department, and the Board of Selectmen for an additional 30 days through to the end of October. Right now, you're through to the end of September. My understanding from meeting with two of the Sewer Commissioners this past week and last week, that they do intend to vote that agreement. They have a couple of modifications they'd like to present to you. I think both are affirmative. One of them deals with my ability, as I have an ability for the Board of Selectmen and the town, to sign contracts up to $50,000, which is designed to keep the town moving when you guys are not in session. They would prefer limiting that to emergencies, and I was comfortable with that if they feel comfortable with it. Primarily, you know, it's a $2 million budget, $2.5 million budget. $1.7 million, I believe, goes to the MWRA, 250,000 or so is salaries. So there's not a lot of expense money left over. I can't recall signing a contract. I think I might have signed one in three years for them, so it's not a big priority issue. And if it makes them feel better and it gets us to the agreement, I would wholeheartedly endorse it. And I think there was just one other minor change. It's a minor, I can't even recall it at the moment. So this, I think, gives them another 30 days. We'll work under the existing agreement, and it gives them time to continue to work this out and bring it back to you guys for a vote.
And we're delighted with the new Sewer Commissioner. He was, he attended the ethics training today, so I got to chat with him for a few minutes, Bob Higgins, and we welcome him. And, okay.
And just one quick, thank you, Ted. I'm just encouraged because I was hopeful that we could get this thing resolved sooner than later, obviously, and I want to thank you and the commissioners for their efforts, and I look forward to reviewing the paperwork.
That's great. That is good news. Okay, we'll take a motion? I guess it's Paul's.
I can make a motion to extend the existing agreement with respect to the inter-agency operations between the Sewer Department, Highway Department, and the Board of Selectmen for 30 days.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And thank you, Ted, for helping make that happen.
You're welcome.
Okay, should we do some, well, we'll save the appointments. You want to roll through the appointments?
Let's do it.
Okay. We have a number of appointments tonight, so, Mr. Healy?
Move to appoint Janine Bradley Sucheki to the Cultural Council for a three-year term ending June 30, 2017.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to appoint Deborah Hoffman to the Council on Aging for a three-year term ending June 30, 2017.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Move to appoint John F. Buckley to the Veterans Council for a three-year term ending June 30, 2017.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to appoint Henry Rayburn to the Veterans Council for a three-year term ending June 30, 2017.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Move to appoint Thomas Kinlan to the Historic Districts Commission for a three-year term ending June 30, 2017.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to appoint Virginia Tay to the Historic Districts Commission to fill an unexpired term ending on June 30, 2016.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ted, do you want to do, tell us a little bit about the library staff associate agreement?
We, the personnel board, and in this case, Marie Harris took the lead in negotiations. Edward Boylan from the library, myself, Dennis Corcoran, and Nelson Ross, and Mary Jane Omera negotiated on behalf of the town with the library local. And the agreement we have is reached, as you see here, and essentially similar to most of the other labor, all the other labor negotiations in the town, standard cost of living and some adjustments to some job descriptions that the union had asked for. One item in particular was a joint agreement to evaluate one particular position, which was done as part of this agreement.
Great. I think this is a good agreement. I know a little bit more about it working over there, so this is great.
I'm going to, we sign the agreement between the town of Hingham and the Hingham Library Staff Association, local 888 SEIU, FLCIO, effective July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2017.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And on labor negotiations, I would report that this leaves us with just the fire contract to finish negotiating, closing out this round of negotiations.
Excellent.
It's good.
Yeah, it's early in the year, too, which is great. Shall, Liv, why don't we do the next one for the reserve fund that we created at town meeting? Do you want to tell us about that, Ted?
Sure.
People at home?
So we're asking for a couple of things here. One is the legislation to be sent to Senate Counsel, House Counsel, rather, has drawn it up, to be sent in. But the school committee has requested that the Selectmen self-restrict $250,000 of the general fund for the purpose of funding unanticipated unbudgeted items for special education. The Home Rule petition allowed the set aside of monies returned from the general budget in any cycle to a reserve fund for special education to avoid the spikes that we've seen that occur that really wreak havoc on the budget because, you know, you just can't budget for something when a family moves into town at the last minute and, you know, you're obligated by law to fund it. And then we've seen the situation where they've moved out and there's a windfall. And so I think the school department's being, you know, rather showing some foresight here to want to avoid those swings. Advisory, and I believe Selectmen in the past, through the town meeting warrant article, endorsed this. Unfortunately, the windfall that we have from the, some of the special ed expenses not being realized last year is with us this year, and it got returned to fund balance, and it will increase our fund balance substantially. And, you know, we're not allowed to utilize the legislation because it hasn't been drafted yet. What I recommended to the school committee, to the Selectmen Advisory last year, was that they consider doing what we do on a variety of other funds, which is self-restrict. New accounting rules require us to designate our fund balance accordingly, and this would lead you to do that by taking a formal vote, saying you're going to self-restrict a portion of general fund balance. The vote has little legal effect because only town meeting can actually spend fund balance, and we go back to town meeting through this. But I think what we're trying to do here is send a message that says, you know, we are going to try to follow through with that legislation, and we're going to restrict a part of our fund balance, the part that got added by the surplus education funds that came in through the close of this fiscal year 14. Hope I didn't confuse it too much.
Yeah, I think this is a great idea because when the schools get hit with these unanticipated special ed tuitions, some can be as much as $200,000 per child. And that, even though the school budget is substantial, $200,000 that you didn't know was coming can put a pretty big dent in it. So I think this was a great idea. Gentlemen?
I concur.
I just say that I had some experience with this, obviously, when I was in the school committee, and I know that it was vetted, I know that it was presented, and I know there seems to be a wide support for it, so I would certainly, I do agree that it's a great idea and it's a good measure to guard against future spikes.
And no more discussion, I'll take a motion.
You're up, Paul.
I was just going to think, I thought I was. Move to approve the request of the school committee to self-restrict $250,000 of the general fund balance for the purpose of funding unanticipated unbudgeted and/or extraordinary costs of special education, out-of-district tuitions and/or transportation through the reserve fund established by Article 31 of the 2014 Annual Town Meeting.
Second.
Any further discussion? And thank you, Ted, that was a really good summary.
Thanks.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Shall we do the one-day liquor licenses?
Yes.
Okay, we're on a roll. Mr. Healy?
Okay.
Lead it off.
I move to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages liquor license to William Avran...
Arvani's.
Arvani's for the Cedar Hill JRP Music Festival at the South Shore Conservatory of Music on Saturday, September 20, 2014, from 1:00 PM to 9:00 PM, and Sunday, September 21, 2014, from 2:00 PM to 7:00 PM.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And move to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverage liquor license to Susan Rizzo for the Hingham Youth Football Parent Social at Old Derby Academy on Friday, September 26, 2014, from 7:00 PM to 11:00 PM.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. You're up.
I move to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages liquor license to David Mahegan for Roam to Tone. to David Mahegan for Rome to Tom's fundraiser at Hingham Public Library on October 3, 2014, from 6:30 p.m. to 11:00 p.m.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
I will move to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverage liquor license to Brian McCourt for the Tour de South Shore fundraiser at Wamperock State Park on Saturday, October 4, 2014, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Move to approve the issuance of a special one-day all-alcoholic beverages liquor license to Paul Fody for the Renegade Run fundraiser at Wamperock State Park on Sunday, October 26, 2014, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Oh. Okay. Why don't we start our one of two sessions? I think we'll start it off this week and the next time we meet, which, by the way, will be October 2. We will switch now from Tuesdays to Thursdays, and we'll go every week, beginning October 2 on Thursdays. Every week, because budget season starts. That was Carol Meyer, who is normally front row seat at every one of ours, so book your social calendar for Thursday nights. And we'll keep that consistent through town meeting. So the first of two sessions on selectman goals for the coming year. And let's see, where do you want to start? Ted, you brought last year's. I took the liberty of picking some from last year and then adding some so that we could have a discussion, and I'm sure Paul and Paul have additions, thoughts?
Do you want to start with yours as a starting point? You want me to put it up here for?
Sure. And since this is, one of the things I'd like to do this year is, if we're the goals and objectives, if we can identify deliverables with each of these, so that we would look to what, at the end of the year, where are we? And what did we get out of this goal? So, because our, the one you handed out, Ted, and the one that I did are pretty much the same. They're very close. The first thing was the continuation of the Aquarian Water Company study, which I'll ask Ted for a brief update, but it's pretty much got a life of its own now. Ted?
Well, yes and no. Yes, it does have a life of its own, but it's certainly not on autopilot. You know, yesterday alone, we received, I believe, the documents, I'm trying to remember the numbers of them because they were alphabetized. I thought he made it halfway through the alphabet. So those are documents that come into the office regarding our response to Aquarian's summary judgment, or Aquarian's response to, or Aquarian's summary judgment requests. And they require, you know, reading on our part and understanding, conversations to myself and council. So, you know, there will be a considerable amount of effort maintained. We will be in court in October to hear the summary judgment, and then the trial will begin in February.
February 23rd, I believe.
I expect that if the town wants to continue to pursue this, it'll take a good amount of resources from our office. And essentially, it is our office, myself and Betty.
I really want to thank Kerry Ryan. He's leading the legal side of this, and he's doing an excellent job, as is John Asher, on the Water Company Study Committee. So this will continue, and then depending on the answer from the trial, then begins the real conversation. If the number is within the bounds, then we have a conversation with the entire town on whether we should buy it. And that's going to be an extended conversation, I'm sure.
So in terms of deliberals for this, you know, I can think that, you know, we want to meet our filing deadlines that are set by the court. And I think one of the objectives would be, and the board has spoken to this about this, each of you, how you want to disseminate this information to the public. And I think you could probably make a deliverable for us on how you'd like us to do that.
Go ahead.
Sorry. My question was, and just, if you know, the summary judgment motion is filed by Aquarian is going to be heard in October, is that?
Correct.
And do we know the gist of what it is? Is it, is it at the heart of the complaint? Or is it, I mean, if you know, if we know, we can certainly?
Yeah, I'm probably not, as I'm not a legal counsel, legal attorney, and that is, you know, somewhat technical. You know, we feel that the summary judgment is not what the judge wanted. They were rather, both judges were rather, I would say, negative about presenting a summary judgment, but at the end, I think they agreed to let it go forward, and we didn't fight it. But I think it would be better to have your litigation counsel give you that update than me.
And that's fine. I just thought that the folks at home might have some interest in it, not to put on you, but I just some interest as to where we are in the process with the summary judgment, I believe, based on what I understand, that there's, it could involve all issues being resolved by a judge prior to trial.
Correct.
And I just didn't know what the gist of the motion was. So if that's not successful, and I assume we would hope it isn't because it's the other side making the motion, the trial date is in February.
Correct. Correct. You know, we could have, if the board desires, we could have legal counsel in on your October 2 meeting. It'll be prior to the summary judgment to update you on.
We're planning on October 2 to have John Asher here.
Okay.
To give a briefing to everybody at home. And I think the motion for the partial summary judgment in non-technical terms, Aquarian wants to establish the price and the methodology. And they're trying to use that, I believe, to give them home court advantage, to use a sports term, and sway the way you calculate the price.
I know that Aquarian's position is utilizing certain court decisions, the decision in Oxford, the decision in Southfield, and which decision they think is paramount for their case. And I think that is the gist of it. But like I said, I think I would be doing a disservice to the board and the public if I were to give you a comprehensive overview of that. I know the limits of my capabilities.
Normally come through, so we appreciate you, you know, what the information you give us. And I just would say this, is that I, I think it's important for people at home to understand the process going forward. So I look forward, if John's going to be here in October, to give us some information because I, along with many other people in town, are concerned about costs involved with this litigation that some people in this town certainly didn't support. So it's still an open issue, and, but I think the best thing we can do at this point is to keep people educated, informed.
I agree, and we're going to keep posting everything that is available on the website. Some of this is arduous reading, some of it is more interesting reading. But everything's going to be kept in the public that we can possibly do. Because I agree with Paul Gannon that it is important that everybody understand the journey. Paul?
As Mr. Gannon well knows, summary judgment is a tool that is sometimes used prior to trial. And sometimes it's successful, but typically it's not. You know, I think that the Water Study Committee made a pretty compelling case that town meeting supported decisively at last year's, or this year's town meeting. And so I think that it's important to let council do their job. They're well-prepared, they've researched the issue thoroughly, and I suspect this will end up before a court, a judge. I'm just curious whether this would be something decided by a judge anyhow in February. I think we're in good shape for the shape we're in.
And I would say I agree with Paul that, obviously, you want to let council do their job, but I think it's really, it's imperative because even though town meeting approved it, there were, I had the, at least the ability over my campaign to talk to many, many people, not all of whom were at town meeting, but, you know, that's their choice, but people that were, had some serious concerns about the financial impact. And just the best thing we can do is let our council do their job, but also keep people informed as to what the progress of the case is.
And I, too, get many, even now, many people saying, what are we doing? What's the status? And I promised everybody we're going to do everything we can to keep this in the public eye. The issue on spending the money, town meeting did commit to it. We're probably better than halfway through the process. If we were to stop it now, which is an option, and we could, a few years from now, somebody is, another group of selectmen, because I don't think this is a job for life. We'd all be dead after about three or four terms. What do you think?
For one.
Now, now, we're going to get you in shape. Somebody's going to come up with an idea that, gee, why don't we go buy the water company? So the issue on the table right now is to get to a price. And whether we do it, or whether the next group of people do it, it's got to be done. And then the conversation becomes, begins. So I agree with both Pauls.
So can we take that as a fairly firm idea that the three of you want to continue with the water company study as one of your top priorities?
I, I think it is a priority.
I don't want to be buttonhole on that.
Right.
This is just a preliminary discussion, and I understand it's important, but it's, it may not be my, one of my priorities, but I'm willing to work with everybody here to come up with a list.
Yeah, I think it's too, too early to say it's our top priority.
Okay.
We're going to number the priorities?
I hope not.
Okay, good.
But maybe high, medium, and low.
Well, I consider that the water company litigation to be a significant event, especially if we prevail and we're successful in purchasing the water company. At the, the basis, I think, motivating the litigation in the first place is that we can obtain this for a price that will save us millions and millions of dollars for future residents. And that certainly made me take this whole thing very seriously, so I consider it to be quite important.
And I'll just say, I think it's very important, too. It may not be my objective or goal, but as a selectman, I understand the importance of it, and I'm willing to discuss it, and if it winds up on our list, fine. But I'm not, I'm not prepared to commit to it just yet, no.
Well, it's on our list.
No, no, I mean, in the end result is what I'm talking about. This is, this is the old list, and I think.
We're trying to combine and add new stuff.
Right, we're just, we're just beginning the process here. We're just talking.
Sure.
That's all.
The second one on the existing one, and I would suggest we leave that, just so people understand we are very cognizant of this, is tax relief, options for targeted and general tax relief. And I think that could be interpreted as like world peace and stuff, but I think we have to keep it in front of us for everything we do and every, every group of monies we look at, every which way we look to try and save money here or there. So.
I think that any board of selectmen should have that on their priorities.
So if I could ask you guys a couple of questions about this, though, because we've been spending, we spent about the last three to four years on this. The last two years, we spent quite a bit of time focusing on how we were going to do tax relief. And I thought last year, we came to a conclusion of at least how we're going to do it for that year with an idea of a model for future years. Are you looking at us to continue that tax relief plan? Or do you want us to go back and reexamine ways to provide targeted or specific relief? That exercise that we had gone through, where we tried to examine all different ways we could possibly, a group of staff, myself, Jean Montgomery, the assessors, Rick Nowlin, and Jane Malmy, the community, helped us. And we, we came, after about a year of work, we came to the conclusion that these were the, and we presented to the board, these were the options that we thought were best, and the board adopted it. So I guess tax relief as a general thing is a great goal, and for us to administer from a staff time, the existing policy is fairly straightforward. To do what we did in the past would be a time commitment, and we got to be cognizant of that because there's, you know, a certain amount of time, as Paul, you indicated your priorities, that's what this process is about, setting your priorities so that you can set our priorities for us. And, you know, there's only so many hours in a day.
So my, my quick thought on that, if I may, is I certainly respect the two members here. My colleagues were on previous boards when they, when they directed the, I guess, the resources of the town administrator into how to look at tax relief, and certainly I would like to use that as a guide. I wouldn't want to repeat every step, but I think we need to have an open mind and look at any possibilities that'll help the people in town. And I make a special emphasis on our senior citizens, those on fixed incomes and low income, because I think it's our obligation to constantly look at ways of helping taxpayers in general, but those the most needy in this town as well.
I couldn't say it any better. I think we have to keep an open mind, as Paul said, and the one thing that concerns me that we left on the table last year, that I think we do need to look at, or just be aware of, we did not use the full levy capacity, nor did we do an underwrite. Right?
Correct.
And that does have some pretty far-reaching implications, and I think that, in conjunction working with the advisory committee, I think we need to look at that because that could be a huge tax increase sneaking up on everybody. So, Mr. Healy?
I'd just like to echo what Paul said, but I, I think that people, you know, the elderly are, and people on fixed incomes aren't the only people that live in this town that are trying to make it all work. So I, I like, I like a hybrid approach, to be honest with you, where, you know, there are targeted groups that have a special focus on, but I like the Big Tent approach where there's some relief for everyone. It doesn't have to be a lot, but it, it's a recognition that, you know, we're trying to help out, you know, everybody in town. And I don't, I don't see how we can go wrong with that approach, but, I mean, if you've got some ideas from, you know, earlier service in the State House that you think might help, I'm all ears on that, too.
And I tend to agree with you, Paul. I want, I want to be cognizant, as I think I said, of all taxpayers, but, you know, I just, I just, in my, in my heart, I feel a special obligation to people, especially the elderly and people on fixed income and low income, to at least explore. And I would hope that at some point, we would have some type of, you know, a meeting on that issue, not just keep it as our goal or objective, but actually invite people in to speak on it because I think we might gain some insight and maybe some ideas.
Maybe, maybe people out there have ideas that we've not thought of, and we're certainly open to listening to them. And maybe they can give us some good ideas like that. Okay. So that stays on the list, and I think maybe a broader statement, but incorporating some of the things that Paul Gannon just said about the elderly and fixed income. I'm going to take one off the list I put out there, and this is a long-term debt management plan. One of the concerns I have is, we've got, Ted, $42 million right now in short-term debt. Where we, is it that much, give or take?
Give or take.
Give or take. How close was I?
I think you're about four to five million off, but it's, you know.
Oh, that's nothing. That's a roundable.
Yeah.
That's my one-month Talbot's bill. Let's get over that. That's a joke. My other half is listening. Forty, forty-some million, how's that?
Give or take.
Give or take. And we've got, but that's being rolled over at very low rates, thanks to the great teamwork we have here, but at some point, the piper's going to come a calling. So I know Mike Barclay is very conversant in this, and I'm sure would be willing to help us. But I think this is something, because this affects the tax breaks we're trying to do. So somehow or another, combining the two will help us, because if, if long-term debt rates go jump up for some reason, then we're not in good shape.
So if I could just recapitulate a little bit of what you're saying to make sure we all get it, because I'm working on this right now as we speak, and I'm glad you put this on because this is a significant part of what I'm doing. I would make one quick suggestion to say just debt management plan because we're talking about short-term debt and long-term debt. And ultimately, your board is going to have to make, along with the advisory committee, a decision, but really, it's in your hands to some extent, as to what's the risk the town is willing to assume for the great rates we're having. We could issue debt right now and lock in rates that are, you know, 250 to 300 basis points above. points above what we're borrowing for. If we stay where we are and rates stabilize, or rates go up, we could lose that opportunity. So, there's a lot of give and take here. I am planning to make a presentation to advisory that had asked me about, Mike Barkley specifically, last year, sometime this fall, or prior to when we have to make this decision, which will be next March. So, our target is March. At the earliest, June, at the latest, we have to decide whether we're going to roll those notes over, or we're going to issue them as long-term debt. And, you know, we can keep putting this off year by year, but really, now is the time to do that hard analysis to determine what's the community's risk profile, what are you willing to do? And you can't make that decision if you don't know what the gains and losses are potentially. So, I'm going to give you a fairly well-blown-out proposal about where your options are and, you know, what you choose.
And when do you expect to do that with the advisory?
They had asked me to do it this fall last year, and I said I would try to get to it this fall, so that'd be my goal, but I haven't yet met with you to talk about your goals, and so your goals will take precedence over my goals.
And obviously, that's important. My side thought in that is, I hope if, if and when you do do a presentation, that they have it televised for everybody back home to, I know...
My understanding is they're televising all their meetings now.
That's right.
Great.
That's great.
Excellent.
I guess that answers my question.
And maybe you could reach out to a couple of people also to have conversations, people that are more involved in finance than the three of us, like especially Mike Barkley.
Mm-hmm.
I'm sure he would...
Mike has indicated that he would like to be there for the advisory committee presentation.
Well, since it's an open meeting, I'm sure he's going to be, but I'd sure like to have him...
Sure.
...help us in this.
One thing I find is that there's no, no shortage of people interested in finance in the town of Hingham, so it's easy to, and enjoyable for my part to get that, get that dialogue going.
Why don't we also do the South Hingham Study Group, and then we'll go to the Master Plan for Athletics?
Sure.
I think I really applaud what you are doing, because I, I think we've got a long-term here of exploration.
It is.
And one of the reasons we're not meeting until October 2nd is Paul has arranged for the South Hingham Study Group to have a very large meeting on marketing. Why don't you, before I fumble all over this...
No, no, no. In fairness, and to recognize appropriately, Judy Sneef is the chairman of the South Hingham Working Group Study Committee, and Todd McGrath, Sue Sullivan, Dick Cook, Cherry Sealan, a gentleman named Lucas is on there now.
Mark Lucas.
Mark Lucas, thank you. And we've been meeting, I think we've had like six or seven meetings in the last year, and we're, we're basically fact-finding in South Hingham, on the corridor, in the industrial park, derby shops, trying to work through the undeveloped property that's commonly known as the Bristol property. And we're trying to get it, our hands around the, the issues of what's there presently, what's projected to go there in terms of just, you know, a no-growth build model, you know, growth alternatives, and this coming meeting on September, I think it's, what, 30th?
Yes.
We're going to have the stakeholders in to discuss marketing ideas and views that they have. And I think that that is something, hopefully, we can get that on cable. And last week, I attended the South Shore Chamber of Commerce luncheon, which was fascinating, because there was a presentation given there, that the, the chamber's hired a consultant to study the area and the trends and the things that are necessary to, to really keep a community vibrant and so that it doesn't wither and die on the vine. Things may be rosy right now, but there are steps, at least as posited by the presentation, that need to be taken in order to keep a community growing in a healthy sense, both demographics and jobs. So, this is an area of, there's a lot going on up in South Hingham in this particular area, so this isn't something that we're just going to sprinkle some magic dust and poof, come up with a, a solution to any of it. It's a work in progress. In terms of the deliverables, you know, it's, it's our hope, I think, in time, to come up with a set of recommendations. We're not a permitting board, that's not our, our mission, our goal. There are people on the committee that have got planning and permitting experience. We have, you know, community members at this point, and the meetings are very well-attended. I mean, we've got three people here, two of them in the press, a couple of them are half asleep, you know?
Us.
Well, but when you go to these meetings, I mean, there's, you know, you've got your, your, your big shop owners, and you've got your neighbors, and, I mean, there's a lot going on, and I...
Which is good.
Yeah, it is good.
And we're getting it televised, and we're getting it the word out?
Most of them have been, so if, you know, you don't want to come and you just want to watch from the comfort of your home, and while I'm on it, tip of the hat to the cable people, because I notice more and more of these meetings are being put on cable, and I really, really appreciate that, because, you know, I don't want to come up here every night, but I do watch those meetings.
Yes, I watch the Planning Board and the ZBA all the time from home, because we just can't get to all the meetings. One of the, we are posting a selectman meeting for that night also, so that the three of us can attend and talk and ask questions without somebody thinking we're breaking the open meeting law, so we have a posted meeting for that night.
What night is that again?
Uh, the 30th. That's why we're not having a selectman's meeting.
I'm trying very hard to, to listen to what these folks are saying, because I kind of match it up to my own experience up there permitting and see if it makes sense, or, you know, there's, there's gaps, or do I need to get more information? And I, and I found it to be just a great, great experience. I'm thoroughly enjoying it, so.
That's great. I think this is important, all the fact-finding, because recently, about three weeks ago, there was a very lengthy article in the Ledger about Hanover and all of the vacant office space along the Route 53 corridor. So, it's interesting that we're looking to develop South Hingham in some meaningful way, and you've got Hanover, which is a very good town, which is, has a lot of commercial properties, and they're having a lot of trouble filling their space. And then we know Wayman's having the same problem, we know Braintree's having the same problem, so it's, it's meaningful to do the fact-finding before anything else happens, so.
It's funny you mention that, because I was sitting with the Hanover planner, and we were just kind of throwing ideas out and the importance of teaming up with respect to getting state money, and that's what the outgoing Secretary of Transportation indicated, that, you know, in unity, there's strength. And, you know, the emphasis on regionalization may be scary to some, but if that brings funds into our town that help us, we should be, we should be reaching out.
The next one I put out there was a master plan for athletics, sports, and recreation, and an action plan. I think this is something that's needed. I think, first off, it will put with very pragmatic numbers, facts, and figures, what we need, what we don't have, and also some kind of action plan on for maintenance of what we do have, but also for what we need, and identify where and what type of facilities. And I think the conversation would have been a lot less emotional over whether we should have a turf field at the middle school, had we had the figures, facts, numbers, everything. So, I don't know if you can see this from home, but I'll read my different pieces. And I don't, I suggested Rec Commission take the lead. I'm not married to that. It would be a working group or a committee, probably more formally a committee, made up of recreation, school department, school committee, the sports groups, Lincoln Maritime, the rowing groups, and SNAP, the Special Needs Athletic Partnership involved in that, and inventory, all the existing facilities we have, because, believe me, there isn't a single person that could list everything we have, and there are some really hidden-away fields that need...
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Crest, Crest being one of them, the, what is it called? The Field for Lost Toys.
I know this one on Canterbury Street that's all grown.
Yeah. And the driving range, though I think the toys are cute, they're for people my size, so what's the big deal? The driving range, I know we had looked into that, and it's, it's, could that be used differently and provide existing, another way of providing facilities for us? But also document, what is it really costing us to move the kids out of town when we don't have fields to play on? So, this, this actually has an impact on our budgets, because if you maintain a field properly, especially a grass field, you have to let it rest, and we just don't do that, because we don't have time and we don't have the ability. So, inventory everything we have, document the condition of each, request a master plan from each organization, and consolidate the plans, map the current facilities to the consolidated master plan, and identify the gaps. And this is a little bit late. Request a plan and cost to address the middle school athletic fields, both during construction and after, so that can be removed. And then prioritize the work on the existing fields, and this would include our 27 tennis courts. And identify the sources of funding, and then prioritize the new facilities needed, identify sources of funding, including public-private partnerships. And we may, as part of this, want to go back and reopen the naming bylaw as a source of funds.
Meaning like a sponsor?
Yeah. What I've been reading and talking to my peers is a number of towns have now realized that the town can't fund everything, and so they have put a framework around private partnerships, private-public partnerships in coming up with money to do things like scoreboards, like backboards, like fields. And as, as this group, perhaps, we would take another look at that.
I think you have to always have ideas, and I think that's, you know, it's a good, good food for thought, you know, that, that discussion, because I, I think of where I want to go with this discussion in terms of, in terms of the fields, and I just know that, listening to people speak about the conditions of the fields, the grass fields, and I know from firsthand how my children played on some of the fields, and they were not really in spectacular shape, shall we say, and I just think that we, this will focus our, our interests and efforts to getting this, this problem solved, because it is a problem. It's, we, I think the kids deserve to be playing on fields, we don't want them to go out of town, we think we have enough resources if we marshal them on the right way. The other thing I will say is, I would like to, you know, just to maybe some thought about who, who is directing the study, because I would think that because of the different entities that are in place and have certain control of fields, maybe we get somebody independent to work with them, and I know people...
That's a good idea.
People have seemed to be offering, from what I'm hearing, so we could, we could talk about that. And, you know, I hope that this committee could move quickly, because I want to address this, this issue as quickly as we can for the kids.
And it'd be great if, if they could move quickly, if there's anything we need to do for Town Meeting, or any input we need to give the Capitol out leak committee.
Well, that's all, you guys just said a whole lot of stuff there.
Mm-hmm. 24 hours in the day.
No, I know, but, I mean, to do the inventory of the existing fields, determine what the needs are, you know, within the body, the population group that's going to be using it, is it projecting upward, downward? I think we definitely have some due diligence to do here, because, you know, I don't know whether we're continuing to go upwards, or whether we've plateaued, whether we're going to go down, can we rehab some of the existing stuff we've got? If turf was an option in other fields, you know, what would the cost be? The parking impacts, there's a lot here.
Yes.
2015 is right around the corner, and I, I'm all for doing, you know, the work that's involved here, but I think that if it's, if it's rushed, it's a planning function, really. Honest to God, it is. I mean, and if we can rehab existing fields, to take some of the pressure off, some of the more frequently-used fields, or reconfigured uses, those are all evolving planning concepts, and I think that it's, it's something that needs to be done and should be done. And to your point, were it done prior to the middle school discussion about turf, that would have been a much easier conversation. And, you know, watching the school building committee conversation about that, it was clear to me that, you know, the overwhelming sentiment was that we need to figure out what we've got, how it's used, and...
What we need.
If there's a need for a turf field, and I believe that a turf field clearly takes the pressure off natural fields, but I, you know, I'd be interested in the costs associated with it, you know, the replacement impact once it's there. I think these are all very important conversations, if that's the intention of this type of initiative. 2015 might be a little...
Think I'm a little aggressive here?
I think you might be.
The only thing I'll say is that I think it's already in place, the information's already there of the, the conditions that are wanting in our fields, the problems we're having with our grass fields, and we may not, you know, solve all the problems in a day, and I'm certainly not advocating that, but you know what? We need to do something about this. This is a problem that's been going on a long time. This whole discussion about the turf field brought it to the light to everybody in town, and I think, you know, I want to make sure we do something. And I'm not advocating that we do anything really quick, but I'm not going to have to drag our feet either. If we know what the problems are, and we can make some, some steps in the, in the near future to take care of some of the issues, then so be it.
We should do it.
But I'll let the committee do their work.
And really, time is money. If we can identify areas that need, truly need to be fixed, if you fix them now, it costs a lot less than if you wait. And the example I'll give you is, when I first got on Capitol, we thought we had a half a dozen tennis courts, maybe 12. Somebody actually did a nose count. We have 27.
How many of them are used?
They are all used. The problem is, the better ones are used more, obviously.
Sure.
And if you don't, and Ted, help me with the numbers here, if you don't rehab it for $30,000 every five years, you do, you replace it.
For $120,000.
For 100...
About four or five times the cost.
It used to be 90.
It's about four or five times the cost if we have to do a complete replacement of a tennis court. And Irma's correct. The town was, I think I was the one who pushed Irma to say, got to make a decision whether you want to be in the tennis business or not, because you can't keep letting the courts go to reconstruction and having your costs quadrupled. It's just not a practical way to run a business. I would just offer that articles for Town Meeting are due in about 120 days. If you're going to form a committee, you're not going to form it until your next meeting, which is another two weeks out. They're going to have to get organized. I think, I heard a couple of different things, but I think to speak with Paul Gannon, it said, some of the information's available. I've heard a lot of different parts about this. If you want to focus on fields, we can do that, and probably, I'm not sure about how, through the committee aspect, but at least administratively, we can do that and give you that inventory and that condition summary. If you start bringing in tennis courts and other recreational facilities, which is much broader, that we haven't even begun to look at in that respect, it would probably be challenging to get that done for, for January. So, I think it might be worthwhile looking at this as a staged goal that we separate over time. Some of the things, we don't have the expertise to tell you. Are you also looking at playgrounds, for example? I know Rec has done some work, I don't know where they are on that, but we have a number of playgrounds that need work, too. And, you know, those are just as important to certain segments of the population. And, you know, those are just as important to certain segments of the population as that, that beautiful soccer, football, or baseball field. So, you know, just give that to the board for consideration.
I like Paul Gannon's idea about somebody who's maybe a little more neutral. I picked the REC Commission to lead it, I'm absolutely not married to that, but they have the bulk of the recreation programs within the town. So I, I would prefer somebody maybe a little more neutral, because one of the things I'm hoping comes out of this is recommendations on how do you centralize control of, of the facilities? Whether it's a tennis...
How they use it.
Right. And do we have one scheduling algorithm, one scheduling program, one setup? So I think there's a lot of work here, I agree.
I, I spoke to Tom Hoffman after the, the meeting, and I have a lot of respect for his passion and commitment to the sports program in town. And I really think that we've got to have a clear understanding of what teams, what leagues use these fields, the, you know, the ages, whether that makes any difference. And I, I think that any committee would, would need that kind of information. I think that any committee needs a, a planning component to it, to, to have an appreciation and understanding for the, you know, just, just the actual design of fields, if there's going to be recommendations to rehab them, regrade them, drain them. I mean, it's planning stuff, basically, so I think it, different disciplines, somebody from the school, clearly.
Uh huh.
You know, I don't think it'd be that hard to do, but there's a lot, there's a lot of different components to it.
There is.
And I would just say this, that I, I, I kind of was hopeful, as Ted had said, that we might be able to approach this in a staged manner, because I don't think we can, as Paul said, we, I don't think we can just, every issue, you know, and no one's rushing it within a short period of time, but if there's information out there, if we can look at problems and begin to solve them in the short term, I think we'll be doing our job, and people would, we appreciate that. We, we can certainly address other issues about who controls it, other issues, you know, such as that down the line a little bit, but let's, you know, let's at least start taking a look at these fields and, you know, let the committee do their work.
I completely agree. Okay. Let's see, where I'm going to go next. We did that one? We did the fields. Ted has asset management, I'm still fighting to call facilities management, so combining the two, town-owned, maybe Ted, the, the list, you have it as asset management, and I'm looking at it more as facility.
Just as a correction, the board has it as asset management.
Oh, sorry.
Those are the board's goals.
The board's, okay. Sorry about that. Let me just tell you where I was going with this, we're a hundred million dollar operation now. I think we do, especially if we're looking at Hingham Mutual, we need to...
He's...
Oh, I'm sorry. Jim, sorry!
One member of the audience has...
So come up and introduce yourself for tonight, and then...
Jim Watson, 291 Rockland Street. Just, just two points, it's very important, as you're stressing, to deal with management and maintenance of the facilities, and, you know, costs and responsibility, but I think if this recreation plan is going to be comprehensive and go beyond what we did, in the open space recreation plan, we had an inventory and we talked very broadly, but, you know, that wasn't really the focus. I think it'd be good to be open to things that aren't standard. As the Recreation Commission came up with the boating program, the kayaks, you know, it's not common, but it's very successful. And I think looking at some community garden possibilities would be worthwhile, because I know the town of Easton, which is pretty similar, has several very successful programs. Even people with big yards tend to want to grow things someplace else. And right now, I think on CPC, there's some work being done at Crestfield, they're looking at the possibilities, and they're, and that's one of the ones we identified, is having a strip along one side that might have a possibility. So I think one thing would be to, maybe with a survey, see if there's interest, and if there is interest, find some of the, the already town-owned plots, and we could be growing things next year.
That's a great idea.
Thanks.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't see your, your hand, thank you.
A victory garden?
A victory garden, oh wow. That's pretty cool. I'd be happy to grow stuff in our own vegetable garden. Not that great.
It's a little dry this year.
Very dry, yes. I'm not that great, I could kill a silk flower.
Unless you got well water.
Um, asset management and facilities management, and where I was going with this is, we're looking to buy, we hope, maybe, Hingham Mutual. That's a 50,000 square foot building. Again, along the lines of the maintain rather than replace. We don't, I feel we need a mechanical engineer on our staff who would do this work, and then also work with the technical people, work with our town engineer, and split up the work, but also devote the time for concrete plans on maintenance and taking care of our facilities. I know the school department is working in, along those areas, and they beefed up the group that's doing this under Paul Field, he does a fabulous job. So combining my thought with what the goal, the last year of the group, and what is on the existing list, I do think we need to move forward. I don't see this as a huge, like, I don't see this going ahead as a goal, ahead of the master plan for recreation. I don't see it going ahead of the Aquarian, but I do think we need to give some attention to this.
If I may.
You may.
I don't see it as a master plan for recreation, just, and I'm not looking to quarrel, I just think that how it's defined, I think we're going to study the fields to determine, you know, what's there, what we think should be done to improve it, and so forth and so You know, it, the, the book that was prepared, I read through it, and there was a survey with respect to the facilities, and what were the anticipated costs, and things like that. I mean, I think we're doing that already.
I see, I read the same book, and I saw that piece being up here at the 50,000-foot level. I see this as more an operational action plan. How do you take the 50,000-foot and bring it down to a level that says, what do I need? What do I need?
You mean, when should the filters and the AC be changed and stuff like that?
Oh, actually, there are programs that do that.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, you're, you're trying to combine the two, I had separated the two. This is the...
Well, no, not really, I just, you said something, and I just wanted to...
Oh, sorry, okay.
At least put out where I was coming from on it. I think we're kind of already doing that, but you want to expand on it? Is that basically it?
Uh huh. And I'd like to have somebody, a technical person, again, I've talked to my peers, many towns are moving towards this, most towns acknowledge they need it, the problem with a lot of the towns is they don't have money.
Yeah, I talked to somebody who does this, and he's, he's not an engineer, but he's, he's their guy, and they have a pretty good budget, and, you know, it's, it's growing government, there's no denying that.
But if I can save, if I can fix it before I need to replace it, and I'll look at the fire stations, we're going to have to spend, what, a million dollars rehabbing fire stations? We've been talking since 2002 about the fire stations needing work, so...
Yeah, but, you know what, I worked at 169 Lincoln Street for a decade, and, you know, I'm not a mason, or I'm not a carpenter, but, you know, I, just by working there, I kind of knew what the joint needed. And to me, when I talk to Mark Duff about Central Fire, I know he knows what it, it needs in terms of, you know, the roof, and he had a flashing problem, I saw a gazalt over there, so I know he's on it, and, you know, the, the school, I think, does a great job in terms of maintaining their facilities. Paul Field does, you know, he's, he's a good man, and so I, I think the people that we have in place are doing a pretty good job. Not to say that the idea of having this tuned up a little bit isn't a bad one, but I'm just a little nervous about just expanding government in an area that we may not need to do.
But we have, we really, I agree with you, with expanding, because I don't want to see this, however, we really don't have a great deal of technical and degree expertise.
We've got some real talent on these committees.
Oh, we do, yeah, we do.
I mean, there's people that step up and serve on these committees that, that bring that on a volunteer basis, and frankly, we're just, we're just really lucky that they're willing to give their time, you know, for the benefit of the town.
But they're not day-to-day working.
That's true.
And we don't have, one of the things on our, all of our committees, and thankfully, most committees have at least two, three-year terms, so you do have continuity, but the people that volunteer, most of them work for a living. So we're not there during the day conversing with the people that get hired to work on the buildings, on the facilities. So it's something to think about, and I know, Mr. Gannon?
I, I don't have much more to say, I mean, I think there's a, a discussion that we'll have about it, and taken into consideration what you guys have just brought up.
Cool. Ted, do you want to add anything to this?
Yeah, I know, Irma, this has been an issue for you, the facilities, and, you know, want to focus on it, I had hoped last year the report would be what you were looking for. To me, when I think of what the town is looking for, I hear a large cry for looking at the athletic fields, the surfaces where the children play on, and the adults, whether it's turf, whether it's grass, and how it's maintained, that's what I hear a lot of. I also hear from quite a few people concerns about the debt management stuff, and certainly South Hingham Study Group, and, and the, you know, the concern of what's going on down there is important in Aquarian. I just don't hear a large shoe and cry from people that our buildings are falling down, or we're not doing a good job managing them. I can look back at the capital plan, which I did, I really don't see a lot in there of what I would call surprises. And that's how I would view if a town is not, and having been an auditor before this role, where I, I actually went into towns and examined how they operated, I, I would look for signs, you know, the canary in the mine shaft is, you know, are the, is the fire department, the DBW, the town hall, are they coming with these last-minute requests that are completely changing the capital plan, like special ed? Over the last decade, you know, really, that hasn't happened. You know, absent a horrible snowstorm, you know, and the debacle at the middle school, there just haven't been any significant issues that we've had in our buildings that we haven't known about. Now, the fire department, you, you, you mentioned that, and I'm glad you do, because, you know, that seems to be the last group we get to. And, you know, I can remember the fire union standing up at a meeting, and I'm sure if we don't get to this soon enough, we'll see them again, saying, you know, these aren't just buildings we work in, they're actually buildings they live in. And so that was the impetus to finally get Central done. But Central came after all the school projects, the library project, town hall project, and the library project. And so I, I think some of the buildings that we didn't get to, we didn't get to on purpose, and we knew about it. So studying it and saying why we didn't do it would be sort of an exercise in futility, because we know we didn't get to it. I think we got a pretty good handle on what we have. Could we do better? We could do better in every single area we work on. I say that every day, no matter where we are. I guess, as you Gannon said earlier, you guys are going to have to prioritize where you want us to work. I would give you that for feedback.
Okay. Thank you. The next area kind of combines one of the things that was on the list that Ted handed to us, and then I grouped it under harbor development.
Okay.
And I forgot to add, and thank you, Ted, because I ran out of time, if the truth be known, Summer Street and the 3A corridor to it. So under harbor development, the RFP for the Maritime Center, which we're working on, a warrant article for this year for the long-term lease for Barnes One, and reviewing, I, I added this because after listening to the discussion on parking at the harbor, I'm more confused than, and I thought I understood it. So looking at the harbor overlay district bylaw and see, seeing if, based on what harbor development is proposing for the harbor plan, do we want to change or propose any changes to the overlay district? And I'm, I'm looking specifically at parking. Well, if you don't look at it, you can't...
Oh, I agree with you, 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 you're, you hit it on the head, but continue.
Okay.
I shall respond.
So Whitney Wharf Bridge, I'd like to see that done within my lifetime. The survey of the seawalls and structures, I think that is underway, Ken Corson's done some good work, John Thomas, of course, and Roger Fernandez, and then submitting paperwork for seawall grants for repair, and then the whole issue of Summer Street and the 3A corridor, because Summer Street is still the most accident-prone and the most, probably the most dangerous street we have in this town. And I know I'll get emails telling me it isn't, but, so grouped in there...
Well, that, that, there's a lot there.
Really? So did I do okay?
Well, you know, I think the Whitney Wharf Bridge is, is, is in the play, it's moving along.
And I hope so.
It's, you know, the material presumably is down there, correct?
It is hoped that that bridge will be up for the Fourth of July, so...
Yippee!
And in terms of the seawalls, I believe there's already been a marine survey done of the walls and given a, an evaluation of their condition and their relative locations, all of which seem to suggest they're in poor shape and need attention.
And that's why that's on here?
Yeah.
I will add to you, though, right now, that I think that survey needs to be updated, it's, I think it's a few years old. Basically, what we've been using is, we're utilizing the work of engineers the town utilized probably four to five years ago, and while we have, this is one of those areas, while, while we have the expertise on staff to look at these, we only have so much staff. And essentially, asking Roger to do this would probably be tantamount to saying, you're just doing seawalls for the next four months, because there's a lot of seawalls, and they take some time. And it's also probably the best area that you could probably utilize a consultant, because the people receiving those grants like to receive them from firms that have done this work. It's, you know, you just watch how the grant agreements roll out, and most of the communities that get those grant agreements did a fairly extensive study with an engineering firm that supported their conclusions, and that appended that as sort of their part of the contribution to a shovel-ready project for the state. I think that's something you might want to seriously think about, as an, as an offshoot to that. Obviously, we're working on the RFP for the Sailing Center, that has taken quite a bit of time, and will, through, through the remaining period of the time, it'll be done by the end of the month, and, you know, the issuance, and, you know, sort of just the management of that process will be a fairly significant amount of time. The article for the lease, of course, is a fairly straightforward issue. The harbor overlay bylaw, that, that's a whole nother task that is, you know, could be on par with the South Hingham Study Group in terms of activity and, and issues. I'll manage the activity of the wharf and update you on an ongoing basis, and of course, we have the grant issue, but you, you left off that, that last item, which we just added on.
Yeah, and that was...
The Summer Street Route 3A corridor, which, I will tell you, is larger than everything on that list so far, if not everything on your entire list. That is a monumental task, so monumental, the town's been at it for, I want to say, 15 years, and hasn't gotten to it, because some of the solutions are, are dramatic, and require things that, that the highway, the state highways aren't interested in, and the town hasn't been interested in pursuing. So we got a lot of work to do there, and it's not something that we can just shove off to a consultant. Got a lot of groundwork for staff, myself and everybody else involved.
But if we don't start it, it's not going to happen.
Correct, but I just want you to be, you know, as, as you guys are setting your goals, one of them is, you're going to ask me what the resource is available to you, and I, I got to tell you, the Route 3A, Summer Street corridor, you know, in and itself, the work involved is probably greater than any single thing you have on this entire report.
We, we did four intersections in the shipyard over a decade, 10 years, and, you know, that also involved, you know, pole-free 3A. You see, as you go down 3A, as you look to your right, as you're going towards Wayman, you do not see poles. There was a ton of work that was involved, and that was with a developer that had the funds to do it.
And it didn't include one of the primary, if not only, accesses to an entire community, if not two, because that's the access for hole and cohesive, significant accesses. So, you know, they, they represent, it's not just a Hingham conversation, it's a Hingham and a hole and a cohesive conversation. So, you know, they represent, it's not just a Hingham conversation, it's a Hingham and a Hall and a Cohasset conversation. So there's a lot to be said. And it's a structural issue, too. I can't move a hill. So as that hill comes down and the people are driving fast, there's a lot of issues that are, you know, remarkably intermountable. So like I said, I just don't want you to be unrealistic about, you know, what solved the Route 3A problem. That's not going to happen between now and town meeting.
I also, I guess I'll wait until I see what the RFP is that's proposed for the Maritime Center. But at its core, I think the wharf is fundamentally constrained by the dimensions of it itself. And, you know, absent the ability to create parking for that, it's kind of self-limiting. And that's what I've been trying to figure out what that solution is. And if we're asking for anything that goes beyond the existing parking, which is really just 30 spaces, is it a realistic solicitation of interest?
Yes.
It is?
Yes. You can build...
How do you propose, then, to create the parking, to put something that's more aggressive than what's already there?
First off, what you're doing is you're combining the two groups that are already there, the facilities. Because we don't know who is going to respond to the RFP.
True.
You're going to build a new structure where the boats will be safe, it'll be used all year round. Parking, you can expand it. However...
Whatever the building is, may drive the parking requirement of it.
It could.
It's likely to.
It could. But if you restrict the use until the parking becomes available, they're no worse off than they are today. The rowing groups park over at the harbor, and the kids run as part of their... So, but you can't, unless you start and get this thing moving, it's not going to happen.
I guess my hesitation on that is if we're encouraging an unrealistic expectation...
I think that's a good point.
Is it going to be worse? Because, you know, it's a community sailing program that shares with a high school rowing team. And I think that was kind of one of these, "Okay, you can do it, just be good," down there, when it was permitted. I mean, it's not paved, it's not striped. You know, I don't think anybody's come down on anybody there if, you know, the cars are a little helter-skelter. But if somebody's looking for a long-term lease, I think that's a whole different conversation completely. And there's Steamboat Wharf over there that's undeveloped, and it's been dormant. And, you know, there's some access to it. It's not clear to me what that is. But you can bet that residents on Steamboat Lane will be in attendance on that discussion. This is a very ambitious and aggressive undertaking. I just don't want to see it rushed, Irma.
I agree.
And I'm concerned that we're, you know, we're going to do all the fields, we're going to do this.
Agreed.
My quick thought is, if you like me, is obviously, this is all to, you know, bring out discussion, not only on this board, since we're being televised that there'll be people in town that'll want to weigh in, either through us directly or indirectly, as to what's important. So I think it's very helpful to have an ambitious list for the purposes of promoting discussion. I think realistically, as we move forward, we will have limitations, as Ted has said. We'll have to maybe, you know, limit our goals for the next year. This is a yearly thing. We can obviously project out over time. But I certainly think it as a positive. And you mentioned the fields, Paul. When it comes to being ambitious on the fields or ambitious on the Lincoln Maritime, I think we should be because too often in town government, we sit there, and it's not anybody's fault, but things don't get done over periods of years, and then it becomes decades, and we wonder what happened and why we didn't do it.
Yep.
So all I'm going to do is one person, and I'm sure you guys will probably in a similar vein, I'm just going to do the best I can to get things done that help people in this town. And that's why I'm on this board. And if something happens along the way, we have to adjust to it, that's fine. And I certainly think we need to plan it, and nobody wants to go in a direction that's going to be a dead end. I understand that. But my goal is to push forward on things that help the town, try to work together with different committees and boards to get it done. And I just think that, you know, where there's a will, there's a way sometimes. We'll get it done. And if there isn't, we'll be smart enough to move in a different direction.
One of the things I was going to summarize at the end when we recap this, I was going to ask for everybody that's watching tonight, for goodness sakes, this is your time to tell us what you would like us to work on. You elected us. What do you want us to dedicate our time to? And what do you think is the best thing for the town? And where are your interests? And we'll see what we get. So I agree with Mr. Gannon.
Well, I don't disagree with what you've said, Paul, at all.
I know.
But zoning by acclimation is risky business, and I've seen that. And it doesn't really turn out that well. And the law of unintended consequences reigns supreme when you're talking about zoning changes, especially down at the waterfront. Because if you start allowing, you know, increased heights or reducing the parking demand, it isn't just the single wharf that we're talking about, it's the entire waterfront. And all of a sudden, the look, that postcard look that we've enjoyed, I'm not trying to sermonize, honest to God, I'm not, but I'm just, I think that this is such an important piece of real estate that we really owe it to ourselves to be very deliberate in the decisions we make with respect to how it's developed. Because it's going to be almost impossible to put the genie back in the bottle if we don't like what the shape is when it comes out.
You are aware that the Maritime Center, however that gets built, will go through our permitting process. So all of the boards...
Oh, yeah. I signed the permit.
Okay.
So I'm fully aware of that.
Okay. So all of the zoning bylaws we have and all of the visions we have for the harbor streetscape, if I can call it a streetscape, all of that will play in as this moves forward.
What I'm trying to say in a nice way is there's 30 parking spaces down there.
Understood.
And I think we just need to proceed into this extremely carefully, especially with the Steamboat Wharf, where it's undeveloped. I won't say it's undeveloped, it's dormant.
It's falling apart. Let's be honest.
It's laid dormant for a century or so. And I applaud your desire, I share that, to have something really nice down there. But I know the hot burn that we got with the berths, which is, who's got that now? Bond, he's got that, he's got like a 30-year lease on those berths down there, the pilings.
Not aware of that.
Yeah.
Neither.
That's his private transaction, I think, not with us.
Well, he got it permitted through the state.
Well, he's got his Chapter 90 license.
Yeah. And that's 30 years.
Chapter 91. I think it's 30 years, correct. Yeah, I think it is.
So once it's in, it's in. And as opposed to, you know, something a little less aggressive, while this is all being teased out and worked through. We made some pretty good zoning changes down there five or six years ago. And then kind of stopped and, you know, it's a huge lift. And I don't, I'm looking at, ladies and gentlemen, the pay of the taxes here. This could be really nice, but it could also be, you know, not so nice if it goes wrong. And I'd like to figure out how to get across 3A. I don't know if the rotary's going to leave. We're still up on Derby Street trying to figure out how to do that. We're still arguing about whether it should be four lanes or three going over the Southeast Expressway. All right, they're putting in epoxy-coated rebar and rebuilding the sides, so I think we're kind of getting our answer. But we're in the queue for that. And we don't even get down on a 3A, at least that's what I'm told, until we get that behind us. So I don't want to be Pollyanna about this stuff. This is business, especially if we're going to ask the state to pay for this stuff. And Bilecki made it pretty clear, you know, if you want this grant money, you got to team up. So as to Ted's point, you know, is that a discussion we should be dealing with, you know, the Cohasset and the Hall Planning Boards?
Just my conversation with my peers in Hall, they would team up with us to fix the Summer Street, George Washington Boulevard. We've had, when we had the audit meeting, was that the fancy term, where we had the group session?
Audit, yeah.
It was very obvious that the Hall people were there, that they've got a...
We're in a three-legged race with Hall. I mean, they can't get out of town except through Hingham and a little choke point Cohasset.
But if you don't start, you can't, we're going to be sitting here 10 years from now saying, gee, I wish we looked at Summer Street.
Well, you read that DOT study they had, and it was all like trimming the bushes back. But, you know, the big stuff, that cost real money and might involve land takings, that was just kind of put out there, just in the air, floating.
Well, there is money if it hasn't been stripped away. Garrett Bradley and Bob Hedlund did a good job giving us access to money. And I don't know whether, the bill passed, but it's the funding of the bill, as we learn. Just because a bill passes doesn't mean it's going to get funded at the State House, that there is money. Ted, do you remember how much money there was in there? Was it like $4 million bucks or something?
Sounds about right. I'm not saying it bad sounds right.
For the Route 3A corridor?
Yep.
No. No, I don't believe there's any money available for that.
So that all got wiped out?
Yeah. I mean, that's part of Chapter 90, and it's part of our competition with all Chapter 90 funds. The money that is available right now is some seawall and grant money. And there was, of course, the boat ramp, which is something that was, has been appropriated for a long time, but they haven't funded the bond issue for it. So, no, Summer Street Route 3A is through traditional Chapter 90 funding. However, there's nothing stopping the town from beginning some of its own, using some of its own resources to begin engineering and funding for it. And I think that's what the residents up in that area were looking for last year. And so I think, you know, the board should consider that. I think going forward with activity on Barnes Wharf, certainly if it requires town funding, is going to, I think, get that group a little concerned that the funding isn't going towards, you know, the safety issue of the road first. I suspect that that's what she'll start to hear.
Well, we're going to ask for input from the public, so this is your chance to talk to us. Your concerns are right on. But if we don't start, it ain't going to happen.
I'm in full agreement that a conversation should be had, but with full disclosure of the realities we face.
The, couple more on the last year's was the FEMA floodplain relief. And I thought we were, is all we're waiting for now FEMA to tell us whether they accept the new maps?
So that's been an ongoing goal. And we were asked by FEMA to submit additional documentation. We've been after FEMA to give us an answer as to when the 90-day clock on the decision would come. And they keep telling us that they'll have an answer to us by October. But of course, October is when the rates are changing, so, you know, we're going to continue to dog that for, well, until we get a resolution because it's probably one of the paramount issues for residents in that area because the costs are really detrimental.
Now, is this also what's holding up the RFP for the snack shop?
No.
Okay.
No, that's working its way through its process, just, you know, the RFP for the snack shop, the RFP for the Maritime Center. I mean, there's quite a few things on the table, so...
And then the last thing on this list was the enhanced citizen communication.
Correct. And we've started that. You know, we've signed a contract with someone to manage our entry into social media, both with Twitter and Facebook. We rolled it out with the department heads last week and a half ago. And we're beginning, Kate Richardson and the firm we hired, Kate Jackson, actually, is the principal of the firm. And they'll be going out to each department and begin creating a structure for how to manage Facebook and Twitter or other social medias that may be appropriate for them to utilize. And begin rolling that out over the next several months.
The first departments to roll out will be the Country Club, Recreation, and Elder Services. The contract that we signed, is that going to be an ongoing contract into the yearly budget?
It is in the yearly budget already.
Okay. How much?
We have, I think, $40,000 in the budget. And what we did was, rather than retain the services of one communications company that we were looking at, and there were several that we thought could fit that bill, we decided to split that work. So we have a communications company that did the audit of our social media, but we wanted to hire someone to be more specific to manage it because we didn't want to pay those higher rates for the day-to-day stuff. One of the problems that, and why we haven't gone into this area, is this is not something you turn on and then turn off when you don't feel like using it. Once you start communicating through social media, there'll be an expectation on the other side of the phone to be there with information on a regular basis. And, you know, we just don't have the staff in place to ask each of the departments to, in addition to everything else you do, now you've got to manage an online thing 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Because that is a 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week situation. So as you know, I think, Irma, you might have remembered when this came up on advisory, I said, "No, I don't think the town should pursue this direction until they're ready to come up with the funding to support the activity adequately." And so that was the impetus of that.
So when was that, I'm sorry?
That was last year.
Last year.
And so the recommendation is, "Don't pursue until we have the money?"
Well, that was years ago. I mean, years ago, I said, I think it was Laura Burns, and I think you and others had said to me, "We got to get into this. We got to start looking at this. We want a website. We want more and more." You know, each of those things require an ongoing maintenance activity. And if you do not have the staff in place to do it, you're going to fail. And so we waited. We waited until the point in time, I mean, I think we probably would have gotten to it around 2008 or '09 if it wasn't for, 2008 or '09, which changed our reality for a few years. And so now we're back at it, and this is our endeavor. And I think the town's doing it the right way. As I approached the Board of Selectmen last year and advisory, that was my pitch, was that, you know, this is the way to do it correctly, with the appropriate resources to make it a successful endeavor.
This, the contracts did not fall within the 30B parameters?
No, no.
And the last...
We did get three quotes.
For an RFP. They didn't require RFPs, they required quotes.
There were three quotes. Anything under $25,000, you can do with three quotes.
Thank you. And any more on that one?
And the only thing I would say briefly is that, I mean, technology across the board in the town is something that we're focusing on and we should continue to focus on, and that I think it crosses over into schools as well. I know that they're doing a great job in terms of their objectives, and I just, hopefully, and I know we will, work closely with them to try to make that happen because it just keeps marching on, technology.
I think the schools have done an amazing job with their technology plan. I think, now, can we give you credit for that, for being on school committee?
If you insist.
Take it, take it.
So glad we have you on this side now. No, but we're going to give him credit. It doesn't... I do think that they have put together a very comprehensive technology plan. You'll get emails on this, so... And I hope...
I hear Al Gore calling.
Catch discussion late.
Just to echo what Paul said, I do hope that we can work and reach out to the schools and have a synergistic plan that spans both the town and the school side. And the only other thing I added was legal expenses, because it drives me nuts that these things are going up. So I thought I would throw that on here, that maybe we'd take a closer look at it. Since I like spreadsheets and I like tracking stuff, Paul's laughing at me, but...
No, I'm not laughing at you.
Us geeks, I got to tell you. Engineers do this. We draw graphs, we do things like that, we have numbers. I think this is worth looking at. Again, if we want to keep taxes under control, you got to look everywhere that it appears that we're, we have growing budgets to see if we can change it or find a better way to deliver the services.
I know we had like a little bit of difference of opinion last time we had this chat as to whether the expenses were going up or down.
We're going to have, we're going to have, continue the chat.
Flesh all that out, but I also look at the quality of the work that's being delivered. And I've now had the pleasure of working with the... And I've now had the pleasure of working with the General Legal Counsel, the Employment Legal Counsel, the Litigation Legal Counsel, and the Land Use Legal Counsel, and I have to say, and there's a, there's a lot of good lawyers in this town, probably too many, some would say, but...
That was Paul Healy, spelled with an H, if you wanna send emails or...
I'm just saying that, I mean, we have a good legal team. I don't sense any of them are trying to pad the bill. I think I made the point last time that it's difficult to predict the kind of issues that will come up that require legal help. I sat at a public hearing in a town not to be named recently, and I watched the rather passive participation of the legal counsel present there, and I just, it left me feeling very appreciative of the lawyers that we have. Not to denigrate or detract from anything, but I've become accustomed to getting clear, concise, correct guidance, and, you know, if I wanna drive, you know, an S-Box, although people say I've been driving those for years, I can, but, I mean, with town decisions that are so important, I think we need good lawyers. So, I mean, you pay peanuts, you get monkeys, and...
I think we'll leave that one alone. Yeah, I think we'll leave that one alone.
And I would just say this, that...
Just a point.
It's a good point. I'm new to this, the board, and obviously I'm aware of the individuals who work as council, and it's no reflection of them per se, but I, I think that, you know, it may have some merit to look, and I know Ted has already presented some information to us. It's not as if we're, you know, we're starting from scratch, so if we can flush it out and have a discussion, and we'll see where it takes us.
'Cause we're gonna put legal expenses back on the agenda, so we finish the discussion. There were several other questions that I had, I had asked Ted to please send out to the three of us the presentation he made, so we could take a closer look at it, the way he was presenting, and I don't think you've had time to do that yet.
Yeah, it went out the week after you...
No, it didn't.
Betty, can you forward the PDF of that again? Thanks.
Well, unless it got lost in the airwaves over to China. That's all I have, so maybe...
Radio.
No, it is not. And I'll tell you some funny stories, but, maybe we can think about this and regroup?
Yeah. Sure. Sounds like...
I thought it was helpful.
Yeah.
I didn't know, have we finished with our agenda? I had a couple of thoughts of...
Yes, on this?
No, no, I, no, not on that, I didn't know.
Okay. Again, I can't stress enough, the three of us are inviting comment and input from the public, so if we pick something you don't want, and you didn't put your two cents in, it's your fault, not ours. How's that?
Yeah, I had one other thing, but go ahead.
Okay, go ahead, I will...
No, go ahead, Bill.
You know, I think it might be time to start examining the transportation impacts here in town, the traffic conditions. You know, we can all tell our own stories about how we, you know, hate certain parts of the town at certain parts of the day, because it's very difficult to get through, and it might be time to start examining some of those traffic patterns and flows, to see if there's any kind of mitigation that can be done. You know, it ties into future development impacts, and issues with respect to exaction from developers on future projects. You know, I, I think that that is something that we all share in common, have that experience. You know, the Planning Board or Traffic Committee could certainly step up and kick in on something like that.
That's a good idea.
And the South Hingham Study Group, is that part of the, or has it been part of the focuses?
Our focus is fairly limited there, Paul, because what we've been doing is talking about Derby Street. We did discuss the intersection. It's at a 25% design stage at Whiting and Gardner. We had a presentation by the engineer, and we can have it again if people are interested, just ask the guy to come. But we don't, we don't, you know, delve deep into Upper Gardner, or, you know, Main and Gardner, or any of that stuff. We're kinda playing in a very limited sandbox, not that it's not big enough.
No, I can...
You know, you just reminded me of something, 'cause this, this will become important. I'm gonna be inviting a joint meeting with the Chair of the Norwell Selectmen, Town Administrator, and a developer who has grand plans for the Queen Anne's Corner area. That will get your attention, Paul.
I'm all he is.
It is. It was presented to me as it's a few apartments and a few stores. This is, Ted, do you wanna draw?
Yeah, I think it'd be important, Irma, to ask the Planning Board, specifically the Community Planning Director, and, you know, maybe even the Chairman of the Planning Board, or Planning Board Representative, to join us at the meeting.
I'm planning on that. This is not gonna be, but bringing Norwell, because it's 80% in Norwell, 20% in Hingham...
That's Damon Farms.
No, this is, this is huge.
Is it a 40B?
Yes. And it is several hundred apartments. Norwell will get the bulk of the revenue from taxes, but we will get the bulk of...
So we're gonna get the traffic impacts?
Yes. It's called sharing. Try, yes.
No.
That's why I think it's important to have, and I would certainly think that Alan Allen would bring their planner as well, just so we have the developer present this. Norwell's already told him to cut the size down for the number of floors.
How many floors?
I think it was six originally. It's, this is very large, and it involves a Walgreens, so I think it's important that we hear this, and that we...
So it's a mixed-use retail residential complex?
Yeah.
I think it's just also important for this board to be very cognizant of the Planning Board's role in this. You know, really, that's their purview as elected officials, it's not the Board of Selectmen's purview. Frequently, developers come to the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator. I know that I made a commitment to the Planning Board when I was appointed Town Administrator that, should development deals come to me, I will involve them immediately. I just don't wanna get off, in some towns, you see this, and it really puts the Selectmen and the Planning Board quickly at odds, so I wanna be very careful that they should be involved in day one on something like this.
And I wouldn't, I would never think to exclude them. However, I think a joint meeting with Norwell would be very helpful for all of us to see.
I mean, I think including the Planning Board in the process is fine. I certainly think that, you know, it's something that's important enough to talk about and makes sense, and I, I've only had one thing that I heard about, that I've looked into it, and I don't think the 40B was the proposal of the developer. I think it may have been suggested to him, you know...
A lip?
I'm sorry?
A lip?
I think it's a 40R.
I don't know what exactly, but it came to my attention, and I may have misunderstood it, that it was a 40B project. It was not proposed to Norwell as a 40B project, but somehow it was suggested to the developer, from what I understand, that that might work for Norwell. But, again, this is why we probably wanna have a meeting with them and flush it out, whatever comes of it, I have no idea, but we should...
And all the permitting will go through the normal permitting process.
Of course.
But I think airing this as a once-over lightly...
Yeah, but, I mean, right now, at 5:00 o'clock at night, that traffic queues back to the ground run already. That, that whole area, notwithstanding the intersection improvements, cannot handle the volumes.
It will be a interesting session, but I do think just an information session and putting it on H-CAM would be very good, with no decision-making by us because of the permitting process trumps. So, but that's a good idea, the traffic study, and I just brought that to mind. Ted, can you think of any other ones you'd like to add? And then I'll turn it over to...
Well, I mentioned to you, you know, just sort of a focus. You, when you're, when you're looking through these, one thing that jumps out at me is, because you've all talked to me about it, is affordable housing. And, you know, we have some initiatives that we're working through right now, and I know, Irma, you've talked to me about Lincoln School Apartments and wanting to expand over there. You know, those are, these are gargantuan tasks that take a tremendous amount of resources organizationally, and so I just wanna make sure you're cognizant of that aspect of the discussion. You know, we've had a lot of conversation about veterans' memorials in town, are there any issues there that you'd like to address? And then, lastly, just clarity in each of these areas, because that's what you're gonna ask me to do, and I gotta be able to respond back to you and say, okay, here are the organizational resources I think we have today to accomplish your goals, and then, you know, here we have to fill in these pieces, which could be part of the budget process, and the basis for budget recommendations as we go forward.
And I would say, that's a good point, on the, obviously the importance of the whole issue of affordable housing, or, I would say also senior housing in this town.
Yeah.
People may know better than I, but it seems like there's always an acute need for that, and, you know, the challenge for us, I guess, is that we have many, many important objectives and goals, and that's, I think was a helpful first meeting on that, and we'll continue to talk.
I think one of the things that is very difficult sometimes when we go through goal-setting processes is realizing that, you know, you could have 10 great goals, but you realistically only could do six. And you gotta, and I just throw those numbers out for example purposes, but at the end of the day, the worst thing you can do is over-commit, set expectations, and then not be able to deliver. So let's make sure that, you know, we can deliver for you on what you want us to do.
Thank you.
Excellent. Good summary.
Paul, did you wanna add something?
Not to this discussion.
Oh, okay.
Yes, thank you, though.
Okay. Shall we move to Selectmen Town Administrator Reports? Ted, you wanna start, and then with Scanning, you can go next?
Sure, I just have two things. Let you know that, that we are moving forward on 43D. The, on August 13th, the Inter-Agency Permitting Board unanimously approved the town of Hingham's Priority Development Site at South Shore Park, and the town has been working with HDIC, and is now completing site acceptance packages, which need to be returned by the state by the end of this week. We will be doing that, and the adoption of the 43D program is moving forward. So great work by HDIC, and I know Betty was working on this with Sharon in the office, so thank you. The other thing is, Community Planning has been notified that they are awarded a Mass Memories Roadshow Grant or Selection, and on Sunday, May 17th, 2015, they will be holding a Hingham Activity UMass Boston, and it's an opportunity for the community and people with ties to Hingham to come together and share their memories of Hingham and help create a digital archive, tell the story for generations to come. We'll have a lot more of this, and this will be a big focus for Community Planning, and I know Betty's also been working on that. Would you like to add anything?
It's one of the things that we're going to showcase on Facebook, because I think a lot of people in the community would be interested in getting involved. The event on May 17th will be right here in San Juan Auditorium, the people from UMass will come down and do videos of people talking about their Hingham memories. It could be a great, great resource in years to come, and I think it's gonna be a wildfire.
So thank you to Community Planning, and I know Andrea worked very tirelessly on this, so thank you to both of them. That's all I have for you.
So, nothing, nothing else on our agenda, right? So, a couple of things, and I would say very, very good things. I was, I would just remind people, and I'm sure it'll be in the Journal again, that this Saturday, there'll be a dedication for the turf field, but I think of important, maybe just as important is, at 12:30, I believe, they're gonna have a dedication of a seat for POW. I think there's gonna be an event, so I would, I would ask people, if they have time, to come down and show support, community support, not only for the kids in the field, but also for our veterans in the POW. I think that's, it'll be a great event, I'm looking forward to it. And then, I will say, in the same vein, I was, I felt privileged, actually, to be at the game on Friday night. I know we didn't really have success in terms of the score, but it was really, really a good feeling to sit there and to see all the kids just thoroughly enjoying the game and the venue and the fields, and, you know, the families that were there. I really, I really enjoyed it. It was, it was everything that we hoped it would be in terms of having that facility, you know, for the community and the kids. I was real happy about that. And the last thing I will say is, I've been working with my colleagues, we have a committee set up with Ted and Police and Fire, so on October 22nd, I just wanna, wanna kind of put it out there, it's obviously a little ways away, we're having a drug awareness forum, and that forum is gonna be at the new middle school, and really, without getting into any major discussion of it here, the purpose of it really is to educate people in town on the dangers of drugs, in particular opiates, that I know there's a statewide epidemic, it's a regional epidemic, and we wanna give people options to combat this problem, and obviously to protect our children and our community. And my thought of this, and I'll get into more detail, is I think we're dealing with this problem for position of strength, because of what we, all the sectors of the community we have, all the forces we can bear on protecting our community and our children, and I will say, we've had a lot of great support in terms of sponsorships, there'll be some articles in the paper, but this is a community-wide issue that I, again, I want us all to, at least, if you can't be at the meeting, it's gonna be on TV, and, you know, I think that we're gonna have some speakers there, we're gonna have the DA in Plymouth County there, and I think it's a worthwhile event for people to come by, not only for their own families, but for the neighbors and for the community.
Good.
I have a reflection.
Uh-oh.
I was driving in, I wasn't in China. I was in Pennsylvania. I was driving in Bucks County, Pennsylvania, and it was on 9/11, and I saw these four magnificent American flags at half-mast, and I made my way into Philadelphia, where my wife and I went into Independence Hall and saw the history of the place, and the, just the magnificent event of clearing our freedom occurred. And juxtaposed with that was the awarding of the Medal of Honor by the President this week to two people, one posthumously and one who's alive to receive it, a specialist, Don Sloot, and a Sergeant Atkins. They always read, the President reads, the, well, the President doesn't read the citation, but the citation describing what that person did is read aloud, and the enormity of the sacrifice, the bravery was palpable, and I just think that our country is so fortunate to have soldiers, sailors, and Marines who put it all in there on those kind of events. We just can't be appreciative enough. So I truly understand the strong desire to recognize Herbert Foss, even all these years later. Just listening to what those two guys did in the Republic of South Vietnam, you know, so many years ago, we're just extremely lucky as a people to have men like that in our midst. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. I wanna reflect on a couple of things that Paul Gannon said. The drug forum that he is helping to put together on October 22nd, I can't say enough about urging parents, grandparents, extended family to come to this and learn about opiates. Tally and I usher at the Blue Hills Bank Pavilion and a couple other places. The opiate problem is real, and it is not necessarily in the poor towns. So the more you learn about what to look for... So, the more you learn about what to look for, the better off it'll be, and it will help protect our children, so that's a really great thing that Paul Gannon's doing. Also, Saturday, you stole that, I was going to-
I'm sorry.
Dr. Ed Schreier deserves a great deal of credit, from on the school side, shepherding the POW MIA chair, and it's pretty cool where they, they put this, you can't miss it, and it doesn't use up any seats in the grandstand. So, please come if you can, I know they've done outreach to the community, they've reached out to the scout groups to invite them to come for this dedication, and then the Fields Dedication is at 2:45, I think, and this is homecoming, so I hope to goodness we beat the pants off Braintree. Not that I don't like Braintree, please. Also, the Fox 25 Zip Trip, I thought was a lot of fun. I know you had court that day, but I was trying to challenge Mr. Gannon on going down the slide, but somebody took the air out of the slide. I think it was him.
Saved.
I think, I think it was him, because he knew I was going to beat him.
Smart man.
I would concede right before we even moved down.
I know, but that would have been fun to do. They did a great job, Jerry McGinnis was on, and that, of course, was his next-to-last day, or last day of-
That was nice, yeah, that was nice.
An amazing career.
I worked with Jerry.
He, he-
Good man.
It was great, they interviewed him, they had his family there, it was really, really great. They also interviewed Fire Department, and Billy McIntyre was Lieutenant McIntyre, was one of the people that was interviewed, and he and his family have over a hundred years of continuous service in the fire service for Hingham.
Hatch.
Yes.
Yes.
So, it was, it was really great, everybody seemed to have a lot of fun, there was so much food, that everybody was tasting and eating, and, so, great time was had by all, and we want to thank Fox 25 for being, letting us be the 200th trip. I got two other things, South Shore Conservatory, this Saturday and Sunday, you heard us give the liquor license, they have the Cedar Hill JRP Festival, so it's two days, great groups of bands, they're moving into the rock and roll, blues area, so go up on the website, tickets are very cheap, of course, you've got the lawn there, and Mother Nature will cooperate. The other thing is, October 3rd is the big fundraiser for the Hingham Public Library, Rome the Tomes, and they do this about every couple of years, to raise money to buy supplies and books, and this year, their, their big fundraiser is to raise money to form a creative area, and I know I'm using the wrong terms, I'm trying to catch up on my emails, where kids can use Legos and become creative with all kinds of supplies like that. So, great stuff happening at the library, and that's it. And then, we switch to Thursday nights, starting October 2nd, and it'll be every week on Thursdays. Did I get everything? Probably not.
I don't think so.
No?
We're waiting to get briefed on China.
Oh, Tally and I, to pick up on something Mr. Healy said, you really appreciate living in this country, and for all the sacrifices that all of our veterans have given us. When you go to a country that is, is the politically correct word, different? Tally and I just got back from two weeks in China, which is an amazing country, great people, beautiful landscape, but-
Do you want to ask?
No, we did not, even, we were in Beijing, we were in Tiananmen Square, we were, we hit lucky days. We had no problems with smog, and everybody was telling us, "You should have been when you couldn't see in front of you," but you did have soldiers-
Minders.
All over the place. So, yeah, we kept our passports close, just in case, but-
Good move.
To go, to go somewhere like that, and realize the freedoms we have over here, that the people over there don't have, is very special, and I wish everybody else had a chance to do that.
Yes, nice work.
I'll let you go first, for now.
Oh, my God. Now, that was pretty good, that's okay. That means we're all connected, we're all out there, and know what's going on in the town. So, with that, anything more? Betty? No? I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Some more.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.